Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Education's Work Session, July 16th, 2013. Today we've got a discussion on special education services, as we all know that is our obligation, I think, both legally and morally, to provide instructional services to all students regardless of what their needs are. I know this board is committed to that, and I think this work session is an opportunity for us to find out what exactly we're doing in that area, what areas we may need to, may impact our budget moving forward, and what the outcomes are for the students who we provide special education services to. Dr. Wilcox is at EEA today, I don't even know what that stands for, but Educator Effectiveness Academy, and will be here at some point during our discussion, but that's where he is, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Michael to get us moving.
Thank you, Board members. On behalf of Dr. Wilcox, we appreciate the opportunity to present an update on all special education programs. Dr. Marco and Mr. Gladhill and some supporting staff are here and can provide some information, respond to questions that you might have. I believe we have copies of the PowerPoint coming to you in a few minutes, but again, on behalf of Dr. Wilcox, thanks for meeting, and Dr. Wilcox is providing opening comments at our Educator Effectiveness Academy, Washington County, for the second year, I think, I don't think it's the third year, is hosting the regional Educator Effectiveness Academy put on by the state of Maryland. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Marco.
Good morning. Up on the screen, we have multiple PowerPoints, and just to give you a layout of the presentation, we have the main presentation, which is 63 slides, but there are over 100 slides if you wish to go down deeper into one subject. We have demographics, we have budget, we have programs, we specifically have additional slides on Summit if you'd like more information. We have information on universal design, which is something that is at the forefront of special education that we're looking at. So at any point, I'll work through with Mr. Gladhill the 63 slides, but if you want to go deeper into one of the topics, we certainly can. Laura, if you'd go ahead and...
Dr. Marco, would you prefer that the board ask questions as we go, or just clarifying questions as we go?
Clarifying questions, that would be preferable, but certainly whatever the will of the board is.
Great, thank you.
Our last report, our last work section on special education was in 2007, so it's been quite a while since we've really looked at special education in Washington County public schools. Going to start with the demographics, and you'll see we have declined almost 500 students since 2002, and this is really something from the state in terms of what they have initiated, in terms of early identification, and making sure that we have interventions in place before identification. So we've really started to look at SWD a little differently, where in the past, if we saw students struggling to learn, we would immediately move into the SWD mode. Now, we do it a little differently. If we see a student struggling to learn, we will put interventions in place first and see if we cannot help them progress before actually going to the next step of SWD. So a decline in numbers is a good thing in terms of we're getting to students early and providing the necessary interventions. You also see, when you look at the percentage compared to the entire state, we're at 9.8%. You'll see a steady decline from 12 to 9.8, and also you'll see a steady decline at the state level to 11.9% now. Just another slide to show you the decrease in both Washington County public schools as well as the state. Once again, you'll see a steady decline, which is a good thing, that we're not over-identifying, and we're also ensuring supports are in place for students prior to moving into special education.
When we identify a child, I assume it's at a pre-K or K level, when we look at a decline in overall disability numbers, are we still looking at the children that were serving with intervention? Because at what point do they maybe cross from intervention into a disability status? So again, I think it's good to look at numbers declining, but I want to be sure we're not misrepresenting how we're serving our students.
And if I'm following your question correctly, we do very closely monitor the students that are receiving the intervention, because I believe there's a timeframe in which if they do not demonstrate progress, they then move into SWD. But in terms of tracking, I don't believe we track this.
I think, as you say, in special education interventions, we track by school, like schools do on different levels, we have to do the rest system, because each of the interventions we have does track data on students. When a student becomes eligible for special education, we'll come to the table if we implement interventions, and the children do not respond to them. Like if they're showing effectiveness, and the gap's starting to close, and they're starting to learn more, we don't really go to special education unless there's a concern by the parent.
That's what I was going, when does the parent step in to say, "This isn't meeting our child's needs"?
A parent is...
They can do that at any time, because a parent, if they submit a request in writing for us to evaluate, we would go to the special education refer table, or to refer IEP meeting, review all the data and see if the child is, if you want to pursue testing or not, to see if the child is eligible for special education or not. And in the case of a student who might have just started doing interventions, maybe they just came outside the school session, if they're making progress, really good progress, and you go to that table, the team might say, "We don't think evaluations are warranted at this time," and we may not go to become to the next step to do the evaluations. But if parents usually really desell that need, we will, a lot of times, do that just to help work with the parents, to have them understand that either the child doesn't have a disability, or if one does exist, then we'd go ahead and make the child special education. But in that case, we've implemented the interventions, so there's nothing new we're really doing at that point for that child if they are responding to the current intervention.
But resources, funding does change when they shift from intervention to SWD.
State funding, yes.
Yes, that's...
And Mrs. Berman, you bring out a very good point in terms of parent understanding, and I receive this question frequently. If a parent desires to pursue special education, they can request an IEP meeting at any time, and that's somewhere sometimes lost, where they think the school dictates the IEP. Parents need to understand if they have real concerns, then they certainly can request an IEP meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So you see a decline of 546 students with disabilities since 2002, and that will also translate into funding. You'll see where we've seen a steady decline in federal and state funding due to the number of students that we have identified. If you look at the 13 different disabilities that we code for, you'll see the, under the 2012, if you see a green, that means we've increased since 2011. If you see a pink or a red, you'll see that we've had a decline. Autism has remained fairly steady, but if we go back to 2005, I believe we were around 65 or 70 students that had been identified with autism. That trend is nationally as well, where we're just seeing many more students identified with autism. Our two largest categories, and this is historically true as well, are students with specific learning disabilities and speech and language impairments. Here's where we've seen a significant increase, and this is also a positive reflection on Washington County Public Schools' attempts to really try to provide early intervention services, and it also represents a real commitment by physicians and different organizations communicating to parents if their concerns in the early childhood spectrum, that we can refer and provide services as needed. So you've seen a significant increase, and what has happened due to that increase is we've shifted a lot of resources and staffing to the Birth to Five program and also the primary elementary. Once again, this is a positive thing, because if we can identify a student and provide the supports early, then it's a very likely chance that they can eventually not have the special ed services and be able to progress in the general education environment. Look at our programs. First...
I'm sorry, I'm going to be a nuisance today, so, which is not unusual. When we're talking at birth there, and I know that there's a confidentiality issue, and the hospital legally is not allowed to give the school system information on the condition of a child at birth if they're born addicted. So my concern with that is if we're responsible for zero to five, but we don't have all of the information we need to proactively reach out to the family, or to the child, or whatever, that, isn't there a breakdown there, and do you see some way of trying to rectify that so we can say, "Child A was born addicted to cocaine, or meth, or whatever, and that's going to be a cognitive developmental issue? We need to get in there with XYZ service."
And that's exactly why, I mean, I'm participating on the Childhood Fatality Review Committee for the county, because there's a lot of other key partnerships throughout the county we have. And we've been talking this past year about how we can get some type of maybe normed release.
Some handoff from...
Yeah, when that happens, that we can all agree to, and we're kind of in the starting phase of that, exploring it, to see how we can more collaborate on that child, in the family, not only to help the child, but help educate families about how we can help kids that might even have a traumatic experience. We're just getting into families to help teach them model reading for their kids, because that's going to be what we can do on the front end, to get in front of all of our children in need.
Is that something you think we can accomplish on a local level, or do you think there may need to be some legislation, or regulation, or how do you see trying to get hold of that really important information earlier?
I honestly can't answer that right now. We've been in collaboration with other agencies, like really the Department of Justice in the county, and DSS, and I'm actually going to be scheduling some meetings with other people at DSS to try to come to, I guess, whatever, what they think might work as well, so we can do it together versus me just coming up with the draft plan.
But part of it, Mrs. Berman, I believe, is really working with the physicians and Merediths to counsel parents to seek support from the school system. If they identify there may be an issue, making sure that the parent has the information in order to reach out to us, so we can start at least seeing if the student does, or the child does qualify for services.
I understand the increase of births with addiction has just, I think it's almost on a weekly basis at the hospital.
And we're starting to see it in our schools as well.
And it's exactly so. Thank you.
We're seeing a bit of abuse too, just from what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Could we please go back to that slide that shows this? Yes, thank you, that one. So in terms of the percentage increase, that's what I was looking at, you see. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
I need another one. There's two there.
No, no, no.
Oh, there you go.
That's okay.
I thought you were reaching for it.
This is something I believe the Special Ed Department is really proud of. In 2005, we did not have any programs designed for autism. We primarily, if a student was diagnosed with autism, we, in severe cases, we would assign a paraprofessional, and the student would just access the general education with a para-pro, as well as special ed support. 2005, 2006, we really looked for something that would provide a little more of a continuum of services for students with autism. So we adopted elementary programs, and this is currently where they're located. We started in elementary, and this will be the second year where we have a middle school program, which we believe is a good start in order to provide a continuum of services. With autism, it's really, really important, I guess with all students with disability, but particularly because of some of the social issues that accompany autism, that students have an opportunity to access the general education environment as much as possible, and interact with students without disability. So these are located in schools, they're specialized programs, but they also have a particular emphasis on including the students in the general education day as much as possible.
Question. In terms of these schools, I'm assuming that it was based on the space availability, as opposed to having a high percentage of students in that particular area? So these are kids who are being brought in from other attendance areas because there's a specific program for them?
Correct, correct.
We also look at just maximizing transportation, time schedules, different areas, others across the...
Okay, thank you.
Life skills programs are for our students with intellectual disabilities, and they really emphasize, one, independence as much as possible, and functional life skills. We have evolved tremendously in this area, and I'll speak to it a little bit when we talk about our Job Development Center, but making sure that students develop skills that they can be independent and also have career opportunities once they leave Washington County Public Schools. And we also want them to be able to advocate for themselves as much as possible, so they can speak to the different needs that they may have. Here are our locations. We have them at our high schools, we have them at our middle schools with the exception of Smithburg Middle, and then you'll see where we have one in Best Room, Morgansville, and Ruth Ann Monroe. Learning support programs are for our students with emotional disabilities. They primarily deal with addressing behaviors. Once again, there's a real need for these students to be mainstreamed as much as possible, and give them access to regular ed classes. Sometimes, though the behaviors are so extreme, we have to pull them back and give them the necessary supports at a much smaller classroom with a lot of structure and a very small student-to-teacher We have them at all middle schools and at all high schools with the exception of Boonsborough High, and we also have a program at Eastern Elementary in Salem Avenue. We did not have an elementary program until about three years ago. Is that correct, Mr. Gladhill, when we instituted it?
Yes, started a lot then.
Interestingly enough, the area that we're having our most concerns with just extreme behavior, significant behavior issues, is at the elementary levels. We have principals contacting Mr. Gladhill on a weekly basis and just saying, "We have students that just have extreme behaviors that we're unable to manage." So that's something we're really paying attention to right now, to ensure that these students have the necessary supports.
Do you see an increase?
Significant increase, and a significant increase in the type of behaviors, the severity of the programs, hitting, biting, screaming, just some real extreme behaviors.
Do we have any ideas as to the origin of the increase, or...
It would be difficult to speculate on why.
Yeah, we've been consulting with different family liaisons at schools and different principals. I mean, it seems to just be pervasive pretty much across our schools, at the kindergarten level. It could be the economic status, other associated economic variables coming into play. We've just been talking about how we can get in front of it. It's not just special ed, it's pretty much systemic. So that's why we've been offering more, before next year, we're planning on offering more training and de-escalation and that type of thing, and encourage teachers and principals to have their teachers come to that who might need maybe additional support, to be able to adapt with that, and help proactively address the issues.
Do you do an IEP for emotional issues, as well as cognitive, as well as physical disabilities? So it's across...
Under each of the categories that we have.
If it's impacting their education anyway, then an IEP...
In any way.
In any way.
They need specialized instruction, is what the federal statute calls for. If they require specialized instruction, they receive a free appropriate public education, that's where that threshold is.
What kind of movement are we seeing between the elementary programs to middle school and then one to high school? Or, do you understand what I'm saying? Is there any kind of tracking of students? Are there students that are moving through all three levels in this kind of an alternative program, or are we seeing success between the levels where you may have students, a high number at the elementary and a reduced number? Are you following?
Yeah, well, specifically with emotional disabilities, this is something we kind of started up high, because that's where we had most of the issues, and then we grew it down three years ago in the elementary to try to be more proactive.
Right.
And that's kind of what's evolved into the, how can we collaborate with Merediths, DSS, DJF, and get in advance to address, even the literacy council, I should include them early, because I've talked to people through there to try to initiate that. But the trends that we're seeing with that, it's really based on the effectiveness of each program, the staff in that program, building that school connectedness, which is why we've developed programs that, so we don't have to send kids to another school, because the research shows if you send kids to other learning programs, they lose that sense of school connectedness, and are more likely to drop out. sense of school connectedness and are more likely to drop out and have their per-secondary outcomes.
And I would, and this is me speaking, but I would say we failed as a system if we start a student in the elementary level and keep them in a restrictive environment all the way through high school. We haven't done our job, because our job is to ensure that students move back into regular ed classes as quickly as possible with the necessary supports. So, I would hope as we track these students, we would not have a student starting at Eastern Elementary and working themselves all the way through where they're graduating from high school in a self-contained environment.
Yeah, and these programs are really pushed in not to be like in that self-contained environment, but they come out as they're needed. Like, if they have something happening over the weekend, something at home, then they can be pulled back, given some support, and then pushed back into class.
Do we have an average of, of time spent that kids? I'm understanding that these programs are fluid and that kids leave their home school, come, spend some time perhaps, and then move back? Do we have an, an average of?
We try to set with, I know with the elementary schools, because they are moving out of their, their regular ed school, their home school. We typically try to get them back as quickly as a semester. That's our goal.
That's the goal.
We don't always accomplish it, but that's our goal.
That's the goal.
The summit programs, this is something we initiated four years ago. Jeff?
Yes, 2009.
2009. And this is an opportunity to add an additional layer of support on the continuum of services. We, when we talk about a continuum of services, we're talking about least restrictive environment all the way to access to the regular ed curriculum. This is one additional layer before a student would go to a non-public placement. And some of the, and we can dig deeper into this, I know the board, some of the board members may have some additional questions with this. But this is a way to allow students to stay in their home school or stay in a regular ed school, have opportunities to access regular ed classrooms, get credits, but also be pulled back if there are concerns. And here's where we currently have them. We have one at North Aggers Town High School. We have two programs at Northern Middle, two at Antietam Academy. We just moved a program to Rockland Woods primarily because of space and also logistically for transportation. Salem Avenue has had a very, very successful summit program, and a lot of that can be attributed to Mr. Gardner's leadership. He's taken a very strong interest in it. And then Williamsport High School.
When do we decide or how do we evaluate the effectiveness of the summit program in delivering services to those students? And when do we reach a point that we feel we cannot provide their needs and they do possibly need to go on to a non-public where? How do we evaluate that? How often, you know, I assume they all have IEPs, but, but I know that, and I'll be careful with this, but in the past few years since we've started the summit program, there have been instances where children, the manifestation of their condition made it very difficult for them to be in that separate classroom as well as out in the rest. So, at some point, where do we say, "We really don't have the resources"?
I'll start. Jeff, if you want to piggyback. This is a constant dialogue that Jeff and I have, where I push back on him a little bit. One, the first threshold for me is if that student in the summit program is a threat to him or herself, or a threat to other students, or so disruptive to the school environment that nobody's learning, that's an immediate red light for me in terms of, "This is not the right program." The second big one that, that's really important to me, because principals and assistant principals have huge jobs. If the summit program or a student in the summit program is taxing them to the extent where they're not able to attend to their duties, then we need to look at whether or not that student should be there or not. And that's, that's important to me, because I truly believe principals need to be instructional leaders. And if they're spending twenty and thirty percent of their day dealing with a student that's out of control, then we need to really look closely if that's the appropriate placement.
So, it's case by case. We can be pretty proactive if we need to. There is a system that triggers this evaluation, that we don't leave the school or the principal hanging for any longer than we need to.
Yeah, on an ongoing basis, the teacher of the program, the social worker within the program, and the principal collaborate. And specifically, what we've been working on to address the second factor, Dr. Merker discussed about taxing the principal and assistant principal too much for mother instructional duties, has to do with trying to work with the social workers to take more of a leadership role. Like, if there is an incident or something, they can help lead that investigation, give some of the information to the administrator, where they don't have to do all the down to the classroom to get that. But what they're doing really in that seeming type of environment on an ongoing basis is talking about, "Is this an episode where there was an incident at home, where somebody came into the house, there was an issue over the weekend, these are behaviors today, we're not going to see them for the next week?" Or is it something that's been escalating, and it's something that maybe organically or otherwise is happening with the student, and we might need to expedite to a more restrictive setting? That's something we're always looking at.
So, there is backup for those?
I have a couple of questions on the previous slide on the bullets. What does increases school connectedness mean?
That is, if students that are in the summit programs have access to extracurricular activities, sports, band, they also...
That means the same as the previous bullet there improves extracurricular opportunities for students?
Yes.
And I apologize, maybe I should make that more, maybe I should clarify it more. When you look at research, it talks about it in terms of school connectedness with the extent that students participate with their non-disabled peers and the whole setting of the school environment versus being placed into another location or another school.
What, what's the, I see increases academic levels of achievement. What, I mean, that's, that's a great claim. What, what evidence do we have to back that?
We're actually starting to look into that now, comparing summit programs to non-public scores. And, and during that, I mean, it's premature to be talking about any statistical difference or anything, but we're actually seeing that some of the students academically are growing at a higher rate.
I'm just trying to figure out how we know that. I mean, do we...
From, what we're looking at is the MAP scores, elementary and middle school, from the kids who have...
Which are administered in the private placements?
Yeah, they were done in private placements this past year and in the summit programs. And when you look at research based on self-contained programs versus inclusive programs, that's what all of it supports as well.
And I believe we looked at MSA, and that's one of our side presentations, if the board would like to go there, but when we looked at MSA, of eighteen students that were enrolled in the summit program, nine of them passed the MSAs. And, correct me if I'm wrong, when we looked at the non-public, there were nine students and three of them passed the MSAs.
It's similar to that, yeah. I don't know the exact number.
Okay, but, but you've already said that the students who are in non-public placements are already a different subset of students.
Correct.
Because they have more severe needs.
Correct.
So, to compare the one to the other isn't necessarily comparing the same group of students.
Absolutely, that's fair.
To some extent, because, I mean, what we're looking at is, we're looking at safety needs. I mean, there's very likely that some of our kids in our summit programs may have just as many emotional needs and other things going on, but they're not a danger to themselves. While others, they're still making educational progress, they're not disrupting the learning of other students. Those are the key factors which trigger that more restrictive placement, if they're not making progress. So, I mean, overall, I would tend to agree with that a little bit, but not necessarily in every case. You have to kind of look at the individual student if...
You want to look at that? I agree, you have to look at the individual student, but when you, a claim like increases academic levels, that talks about cohorts. And if we're talking about cohorts, it seems we have to have, we have to be sure that the apples compare to the apples.
It's a very fair assumption to say that the students in non-public have more significant emotional needs than the students in summit. There's a reason we have to take the ones that are, which would interfere with their learning. So, you're right, it is apples.
Do they take modified MSA?
I don't believe we do modified MSA.
We don't do modified anymore? Alternative? I have a question about personnel. Can you tell me a little bit about what constitutes the summit program in terms of personnel? Jeff mentioned a social worker, content area teacher.
It's a social worker, a teacher, and two paraprofessionals. And those paraprofessionals are there to help the students transition back into the classroom, so we can ensure that they're experiencing success versus just putting a student in a...
So, that would be, that would be true of each of those summit programs?
Yes.
That, that's what constitutes the...
And when we did a cost analysis on the front end of this, looking at the financials, which was a concern in developing with the use of AWA funds, it came out to be about six and a half students. That if we could support six students in a summit program, it pays for itself financially.
And we have approximately, how many students in these programs?
It usually runs between nine to twelve.
In each of the schools?
Yeah, because it can run more.
Eighty-three total.
Eighty-three total.
We try to do that enrollment based on number of kids actually being taught in that self-contained setting, like any one subject area during the day, because you could have kids that just come back to get the supports of the social worker checking in throughout the day.
Right. Thank you.
And this is always my plug. If you hadn't had an opportunity to visit Marshall Street Job Development Programs, it's just an outstanding place to, to visit and see the, the work of the teachers and educators there, working with our children that have the most significant disabilities. But these are, once again, very closely aligned with our life skills programs, a more restrictive environment. It is a school dedicated for students with disabilities. Once again, it really has a strong emphasis on work-related training, experiences, functional skills, and maximum independence. We have expanded where we have a satellite downtown where students can go out and do work-related experiences within the community. And we also have a satellite at HCC where students also have an opportunity to do work-related tasks and really get that, that career experience. So, that's been a real plus for this program.
Do we have any data on the employability of these youngsters? How many of them are employed?
I don't know if we track that.
We do have like generalized data, which we've been working with the state department to try to give more specific data by actual students, comparing the programming. It's actually an indicator of fourteen, I believe, of our state's performance plan that we exceed. But the state has been giving us our numbers for that overall versus the aggregating by students, and we're trying to get that to look at. I, I don't have those percentages with me right now, but I can get that for you.
Is that misprinted on JDP? Did we really increase enrollment in the Job Development Program by more than a factor two this year, or last year? Are you looking?
Thirty-seven, thirty-six, eighty-three? Thirty-three maybe.
Thirty-eight.
It must be, it's a thirty, okay. Because it's total. Okay.
Thirty-eight, it was translated.
That was probably me. It's very likely it was me.
What is the transition from Marshall Street? We know these are some of our most challenged students, and some of them have issues with violence toward people, maybe themselves. When we, when they leave our system at twenty-one, what's out there that they transition to? Are they, help me understand what's going out into the society as a whole?
Karen Newman is our expert in this area.
Good morning. That's a great question, and I was hoping, that's a great question. I was hoping someone would ask that question so that I could say that generally for these students, our social worker makes community connections for them through the Developmental Disabilities Administration for the majority of them. It is not an entitlement, it is an eligibility based on their significant cognitive disability. But the majority of the students that leave Marshall Street and the Job Development Program receive adult services through the Developmental Disabilities Administration in combination from day programming support, residential supports when the family becomes in crisis, and also supportive employment supports.
And something we've been working on through other agencies and stuff we've been working with, is like the instructional technology we're utilizing with the streets and for communication, trying to build a bridge that when they do leave us, they can access that same type of technology after they leave us, because they've been used to using maybe an iPad or something like that. And if that is the piece of the technology to use, trying to make sure that that agency can kind of provide that same piece of technology, because they're used to that every time.
Is there a barrier to qualify for that service if you're particularly violent?
There is not.
So, they won't block someone?
It's, it's a little more difficult to get a, to get a community provider, because the community providers such as United Cerebral Policy or the Ark of Washington County or Star Community, they select individuals. So, the choices become more limited for some of our more significantly impacted individuals, particularly sometimes the individuals with autism. It's a little more difficult, but generally, again, our social worker works very hard as our students are in their last year, the year in which they turn twenty-one, to help make sure those connections are made and that families feel supported. I also want to say, some of the students receive services from Doors as well, the Division of Occupational Rehabilitation Services if they're eligible.
And addressing, because Karen, a lot of times in graduation at Marshall Street, you'll announce, and they'll be entering the Doors program, they'll be entering this program, entering that program, going to work for somebody, you'll hear that all this with every student.
Our goal is to not to have anyone be staying home.
Exactly so.
And we've been pretty successful with that.
Going back to what Mr. Bailey was saying earlier about transition outcomes, we have some job coaches that also work with kids to try to help to get them employed and work on their work skills and employability, so they can get work once they leave us.
Is there an age-out system from any of those services, or?
There is not. The individuals that are eligible through the Developmental Disabilities Administration are eligible throughout their lifetime.
Thank you, Karen. Looking at our non-public placements, and you'll see a significant decline in the number of students that we have in non-public placements. And I would say this is primarily due to the adoption of the summit program, where we've seen, two thousand and seven, we had two hundred and nine students, and presently we have eighty-four students. Which is a decrease from eight point seven-four percent to four point two-seven percent. And this is something that the state and federal government monitor very closely. They want to see a decline. They, through IDA, they prefer students to be accessing to the greatest extent possible in the least restrictive environment. Non-public placement is typically the most restrictive environment that you can have. Looking at our funding, once again, I have trend data all the way back to two thousand and seven. This just demonstrates right now, we're almost twenty million dollars dedicated to special education, local funds. Our next largest chunk would be coming through, passed through federal government, which is almost five million dollars. And then you see, we have state and Medicaid. This is a trend data from two thousand and seven.
When you say local, what you mean is money from our operating account?
Correct.
That's not separate money from locals?
From the account.
That's all the money that we allocate.
Yes. The, once again, the green represents an increase, the pink or the red represents a decrease. You can see it ebbs and flows from local funding, where we were seventeen and nineteen. So, on average, it's about eighteen million over the past five years, six years. State, very similar. Federal, you'll see a decline. This is primarily due to us decreasing the number of students in order to, of course, get paid per student. You're going to see a decline.
It's going to identify eleven MCA with funding that we have.
Right. There was, there's a hiccup in there from the stimulus funding.
Yeah, that's how we instituted the summit program, so it wasn't a cost risk. In the event, it wasn't successful.
And this is where it always, it gets challenging, and this is always an important note that I try to highlight. When we give any kind of salary increase to ESP and teachers, it results in us reducing the number of staff in order to fund that, because it's a finite amount of money, especially when it decreases. So, Jeff has the very difficult job every year of really looking at every position and allocating it appropriately to make sure that we're maximizing our staffing.
Wait a minute. Did you just say that when we give teachers a raise, we have to lay off, we have to eliminate staff? Is that what you, that's what I heard? Is that what you said?
We have to look at our funding source... We have to look at our funding sources very carefully. Typically, it is not people. Typically, it will be in an area such as assistive technology, but there are cuts that have to be made when we have a finite amount of money and we give raises.
I understand that, but we had, and we had a long discussion as a board about the other things that we are going to reduce to free up the money to give raises. I wasn't aware that personnel were, I mean, am I missing something with my colleagues?
No, I had to say.
I think maybe I might be able to clarify, I believe what Dr. Mark is referring to is the fact that the finite pot of money is not in the general fund when it's in the grants. So the special education grants do not expand at the same rate or even at all when the general fund expands. So when we give a salary increase, any teachers or paraplegics who are assigned to the grant need, will need to get that, they are part of the bargaining unit, they will receive that increase, but the pot of money in the grant does not expand accordingly. Ergo, we have to cut something in the grant in order to fund those salary increases for those grant-funded teachers.
Which is true for Title I as well. Or creep more broadly into the general.
Yeah, and what we've done like this past year is we've really kind of minimized as much as we can within those grants. We've also shifted some county funds to be more kind of, I guess, creative with how we're providing the supports we necessarily have.
Just to be sure, special ed is all grant-funded? Is there any non-grant?
No, it's not all grant-funded, but we have certain grants that we expect.
So I'm trying to parse the budget. So what percentage of our operating, what percentage of our operating budget is special ed expenditures? Not saying revenues come in.
About eighteen percent of the cost of special education is paid for by IDEA, which is the Individual Disability Education Act. We're not far from that. So our general fund always supports special ed.
If you go back to the slide where it has county fund, all of that money is going to a special education out of the county budget.
This is all the county budget right here, the board's budget.
I was trying to divide it between grant money and others.
Can you back up to that pie chart?
Because going to Mike's comment about raises, if it's not all grant-funded, then there is some impact on grant.
So if you look, if you look at this chart, you'll see that our total special ed lift is the pie. We're spending about nineteen million dollars locally to support special education. We receive about five million dollars from the feds, and then we receive a couple of other little slivers. You see the little Medicaid reimbursement. We have the Marshall Street staff over there doing that. One of the program issues I think we're going to have to evaluate is, is it worth the squeeze for the juice there? We have, how many people over there in Medicaid reimb-
Two paraprofessional positions.
Two paraprofessionals, so two people making probably about a hundred thousand dollars total in benefits, but they're only bringing back a hundred and eighty thousand. Now, you might-
I'm sorry, it's the nine hundred sixty-two thousand.
Nine hundred, excuse me, nine hundred sixty-two. So that's a little bit different. But the issue there is, we have to then look at a little amount of state funding and the requirements that we have. I mean, we just have to continue to look at that.
So that four point eight is grant money?
Yeah, that's federal funds coming through the state.
IDEA.
In fact, when you asked earlier about how do we get our funding for numbers of SWDs, that's the calculation that's involved in that. If, say for example, our number of students were double for SWD, that number would approximately double, but it's done within a state formula like all of our other funding.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the comment about when we give raises that could result in a reduction in force.
It's something we have to be careful of in the future.
Okay, but would you not, and I understand what Mr. South is saying about there being a finite amount of money, and you're paying people out of that finite pot. Why wouldn't then those people, rather than there being a reduction in force, why not, would they not be paid from the general fund? In which case, that would mean a reallocation of money at our end, that that would be a decision that we would make, rather than see fewer people in special ed delivering special ed services, that we would be making that decision as a board, that we would want to fund those positions out of the general fund. Is that, does that make sense? So are we given that opportunity before that happens?
I don't believe.
Or is that just the decision that's made in the special ed office as opposed to?
It's a decision that's made in the superintendent's office after taking input from the Director of Special Education, Associate Superintendents, and others. And bottom line is this, I want to be clear because it is being recorded, somebody might be like, we have not had a reduction in force of any personnel in special education. But we constantly reevaluate what we can buy with that five million dollars. We consciously make decisions to move people in and out of special education-funded positions that are one hundred percent funded to general fund on an annual basis. So when we look at this, we're saying to Jeff, Jeff, you've got to make the best use you can of your five million dollars. After that, we're picking up the cost. We can't say no to providing the services for kids. Once the IEP happens, if there's a paraprof that's needed, if there's an additional teaching unit because it's one way, we buy it. If they say there's a nurse, we buy it. So that is a staffing level decision that we make before it comes to board. When you approve the budget, you give us the authority to make that happen. But we wouldn't bring individual positions to you.
No, 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 no. That's not, that's not what I meant. But that would be, those kinds of decisions would be reflected in the budget that you were presenting.
Absolutely, you would see.
That you were presenting to us.
Right, you would see more general fund positions or fewer special ed positions or the inverse.
I understand.
I'll just add as well, it's also one of the reasons that on the personnel lists that we get, it often states who, when somebody's being hired, who they replace, or it might indicate if a position's being redeployed. Many times, redeployed positions come from that type of thinking.
That kind of.
Absolutely, it does.
So that's a time to ask a question like that as we go through our process.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Through the summit savings, Jeff has also been able to add positions as well.
Like the elementary support for success program, we try to address them as kindergarten behavior issues we've seen.
The state has specific performance indicators for students with disabilities. I'm going to move through these fairly quickly. There are twenty of them. They look at graduation rate, and as you look across, this is one area that we have not met. But we are going, I'm going to share a plan with you at the very end of this where we're really going to, the areas that we're not meeting the target, where we're just going to re-energize, refocus, and really try to change this trend. But graduation, you see, we did not meet it. This does show that we are demonstrating growth from two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. They look at dropout. This, and when we go to the next state, next slide, this is the area that I am most concerned when we start looking at the data. And the next slide will reveal that. And I believe the special ed department has done a really nice job of putting together a strategic plan to really address this and intensify our efforts to accelerate the learning of students with disabilities. But this is concerning when you go straight down the line and see that we're not achieving MSA. And that's just a brutal fact that we need to face as a department and make sure that we change the trend and provide increased support. You will see here, though, we did have some gains from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven. But when we started really looking at this, this is something that we need to work on. It's just unquestionably an area that we're not satisfied with, and we're going to do everything possible to move it forward. Have a plan at the end, I'm going to share with you that I hope, the department hopes, and Dr. Wilcox hopes, will accelerate learning. Just some other areas, we look at suspension, disabled first, non-disabled. Once again, single suspensions, these are multiple. We look at expulsions, all in which we're doing a really good job. The other indicators that we look at, the time that they spend in the least restrictive environment. Like I said earlier, this is one area that the state really looks at and the federal government really, how often are students able to access the least restrictive environment? And that's five A through six B. We're still working on getting the results of this. There is a data transfer state between local and state. So we, we need to get back with the state and make sure that we have accurate information with MSD in the different areas of the social, emotional skills, knowledge and skills, and appropriate use of behaviors. Parents survey, this is another area, and you'll see an initiative where we're going to work to resolve. We're getting the input, while it's not super, we're meeting the target. But here, age three to five, we're not getting the parent survey. So you'll see one of our initiatives is we're going to directly work on this to make sure that we're getting feedback from the constituents that are accessing special ed services. This is looking at the identification by race. Typically, African-American throughout the nation have been over identified, so it's always a really good indicator when we meet that standard. Once again, representation in the special ed classes and appropriate identification. If you look through this, this deals with making sure that we're compliant with timeframes and ensuring that we meet that sixty calendar day for assessment and providing parents with the different results. This one looks at eligibility, moving from an IFP to an IEP. IFSP, excuse me, which would be the birth of three, and then we transition to an IEP. Here's another area that we really want to look at in terms of dropout rates. You'll see that two thousand and three, two thousand and eight, we saw a steady decline. And then we've started the upward trend, and it's right around here. You'll see with our initiative at the end of this presentation, this is another area that we're going to work very, very hard to get the downward that we are experiencing in this timeframe. Graduation rates, fairly flat. You can see the red line is indication of regular ed graduation, and then the green line would be special ed students. We've had a slight decline since two thousand and ten, but it remained relatively flat, as you can see, from two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve. This is our strategic plan moving forward, and it's really going to require a joint effort with Dr. Domain and everybody. It's going to be all hands on deck in order to get this moving. What I wanted to do is just give a little backdrop on Common Core state standards. I know you are familiar with it, but in terms of students with disability, we really haven't had a lot of conversations as to how the Common Core state standards will roll out with students with disabilities. And we need to, more than ever, make this an extreme focus for special ed providers, principals, assistant principals, supervisors, to make sure that nowhere in this conversation do we forget about students with disabilities. So I'm going to move really quickly because I know you've had an opportunity to see a lot of it. Here's what students are going to need in order to meet Common Core standards. As you look through it, you're going to probably see more rigor than ever, which is going to require us to intensify our instruction and our supports for students with disabilities. This is a great slide I came across. Fewer standards, clearer standards, but principal three, they're going to be a lot more rigorous. And once again, when we have rigorous standards, we're going to have to make sure that we have all the supports necessary to ensure all our students are being successful. Once again, the Common Core state standards, as you really dip into the literature and research, the researchers truly believe that they're going to prepare students to be more effective with twenty-first century skills, but be able to enter the competitive global environment with the skills necessary to compete and succeed. And that's true with students with disabilities. Once again, they cannot be lost in that conversation. This is a great overview slide in terms of what the standards will do. You'll see college and career expectations. They're clear, understandable, consistent, rigorous. They build upon strengths and lessons of current state standards. They, and this is also something that I believe when you look at the Common Core, which is a definite plus, we can now compare state to state, but we can also look at some international standards because they do align. If you look at this, this is what our educators are going to need to be able to do. And I'm going to really emphasize this because in many cases, we work in silos when it comes to special education where they do their thing and then regular ed teachers do their thing. We cannot have that. They need to be able to do exactly the things on this sheet. And that's going to require extensive professional development. That the special ed teachers need to be accessing what the regular ed teachers, Dr. Domain and I talked about this just this week, in terms of, we need to make sure that if an English teacher is receiving deep, rich training for Common Core state standards, that our special ed teachers have the same training because they need to be able to provide the same level of support as a content teacher. So we're going to work really hard in these areas to make sure that all our special ed teachers possess the skills to support regular ed. This is something really interesting that I came across in terms of Common Core standards. And this is, when I was a special ed teacher, a lot of times, what we did in the regular ed classroom is we took content and we watered it down where it just wasn't at the same rigor. Special ed individuals that are looking at this and researching are saying, you can't do that. You can accommodate the students so they can access the curriculum at grade level, but you can't dilute it. So we need to be very conscious is that we have the right accommodations to ensure the student is accessing the same content at grade level.
Mike?
Yes?
When you write an IEP, there are certain goals set in there. Which takes precedent for that student? The goals that are set in the IEP, the instructional or outcomes or the Common Core?
Well, one of the initiatives, that's an excellent question. Because the state has said, no, we're going to continue to have IEP goals that are aligned with the state curriculum. Everything that I find, other districts are saying, oh, no. You need to make sure your IEPs are aligned with the Common Core state standards. So the conversation as a department that we're having right now is we're going to shift regardless of what the state is saying because they're eventually going to have to make that shift, is, one, the IEP goals need to be structured to the needs of that individual student.
So they're going to be modified in the IEP anyway, whatever the-
Yes, but they have to have the Common Core state standards to the curriculum. Otherwise, we're doing an injustice. We're saying, you need to learn this, but when you go in the classroom, it's going to look totally different. So the IEP goals need to have elements of the Common Core state standards. Jeff, I don't know if you-
But they still would be modified to fit the needs of that child.
Yes.
And a lot of times, I mean, you're going to have the IEP eligible students be a subset in a larger circle of Common Core because whatever you're doing through the IEP has to be taught through Common Core, but the IEP is really targeting that student's disability and what they need specialized instruction in regarding how it's impacting him and his core.
So, so wouldn't it be not so much what they're being taught, but how they're being taught? The accommodations being made for them to be able to be proficient in the Common Core.
Exactly. And when you look at this and you look at the structure of the Common Core state standards, they're saying, we're going to establish the standards. We want all students to access and achieve them, and we're going to make you accountable. With that said, though, you own everything in here. How you're going to do it, where you're going to do it, the time you're going to dedicate, what the curriculum, what the instructional. That's the autonomy of the school system. This is the structure in which the state and federal government have established. Here's where we're going to go, and it is our true desire to accelerate student learning. And next time we show you that slide with the performance indicators, we hope to see significant gains as we move forward. And this starts us down the trail of how we're going to do it. Access. Anytime you get into the research about students with disabilities, it really, really, really states that students need to have access to the general education curriculum. They need to be in that language arts classroom every day. What we tend to fall back on a lot of times is we pull students out of that language arts class. arts class, so they miss sixty minutes of instruction that the non-disabled peers receive. That doesn't make any sense because they fall further behind. So we need to look creatively at our scheduling, whether it's pulling out of encore, which I know is always a place where parents push back. But we truly believe for a student to be successful moving forward, they're going to have to be able to read, write, and problem solve. And if that means in order to get them up to speed, we need to pull them out of band, music, art, PE, that's a necessary, necessary thing we need to do. So we need to...
Run that by me one more time. Because I think I heard this about fifteen years ago. That if, if it's necessary to get somebody up to speed in reading, writing, arithmetic, we're going to pull them out of everything else. And that was a monumental flop. So why are we reverting back to something that's already proven to be a failure?
Mr. Right, now, I believe what we're really trying to emphasize is that students have access to the content courses first. Now, that may not be missing art every day or missing PE every day, but it's providing an opportunity where they're still in their content, their social studies, their science, their math, their language arts, and not being pulled out. If you're delivering a lesson on World War II and a student's coming out, they're going to miss all that information. We just want it to the maximum extent possible to make sure that they have access to that general ed curriculum.
But, but Mike, you're saying they're going, that they're getting pulled out for phys ed or for art or for music from a history class? I mean, I would think, don't we schedule, is art, whatever these courses are, phys ed and whatever, I mean, aren't they a part of the regular classroom experience? I mean, isn't it scheduled in the, in the school day? They're, they're still going to have their history class, they're still going to have their science and their English class. How is pulling them out of art going to help them, or is it going to enhance the history class experience? I mean, they've already had it. You know, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's, again, I want to see, I'd love to see the research, you know, prove it to me. Because I don't buy it. I don't even come close to buying that pulling kids out of, of other areas that are educational, that are important, is going to enhance and change anything up here.
Jeff, I may go back and maybe clarify necessary. Because what we've been doing this past year was actually implementing additional initiatives that we could try to do additional services even throughout the school day. Because if students need more reading instruction, intervention, that type of thing, we've implemented some strategies like breaking through barriers where kids could actually take home in elementary schools, an iPad if it's going to help them in school and work on certain applications to help get them back on track, get them on level in addition to the school day. Well, necessary comes in at sometimes if a student is showing growth in, let's say, a program, although we all agree that best instruction happens in the classroom first through a highly qualified teacher. But if a student is showing good progress in a program like Wilson or something like that and making progress in that, rather than taking that kid out of like their English class for Wilson, we would teach that Wilson at another point in the day. And it may not be, what needs to happen is with the team to classroom focused improvement process and planning collaboratively within the score is which time is going to be the best time to pull this kid out for forty-five minutes, two days a week, to make sure we can get this program going. We might even try to do before school lunch, I mean, like after lunch, after school, but we have to make that individualized decision based on the student because we don't want the student to shut down and lose motivation if we're pulling them out of an area that they look forward to every day. Because the motivation is key first. But we have to implement what's going to make that child successful. And we're just trying to do the best we can for each child, given the confines of the schedule and the day, and try to be effective with our schedules and...
And Mr. Right, now, I understand your frustration. I probably wouldn't have gone to school if we didn't have PE. But Allington says you need, if a student is two grade levels behind in reading or writing, they need double and sometimes triple doses of reading lessons.
Well, then, why don't we get together with parents and extend their school day? Allow those programs to be at one time or the other. We go from one thing, you know, we're going to say, okay, we're going to improve your reading, but you're going to be unhealthy for the rest of your life. You know, you're going to be, you know, subjected to diabetes and other issues that come from not having physical activity. You know, it's, it's just a constant...
And I think that's something we're going to look into and maybe even look at other summer program options or things like that.
Well...
But we may look into it, but it'll end up being the same thing. We'll go right back to where we were fifteen years ago, where we're pulling kids out of phys ed, art, music, and everything else. And those, with all due respect, they are an important part of the educational process. You know, you learn to read through music, art. You can learn to read through phys ed. You can, you can learn other skills that are life-enhancing and educationally important. You know, we are, again, going back to this notion that there's only reading, writing, arithmetic. Might throw history in there for, for fun. You cannot begin to imagine my level of frustration when I hear that.
And just so you know, schools have been looking at like expanding the days and things like that. And I think some even had transportation options, but one of the issues with that sometimes is if we can't get the kids to stay.
Well, you know, then why the heck don't we go to the state and feds who are dumping all this crap on us and say to them, if you want to legislate, why don't you legislate an extended school day or an extended school year and finance it for us? Instead of forcing us into a position that we have to chop out those things and many of those things that keep kids here, first of all, and secondly are important to, to making a complete person?
Question, just to lead, go further. ESEA, No Child Left Behind, whatever you want to call it, is still in place. And in there, they define fine arts as a core subject. You're not supposed to be able to impact those classes. So how do we, how do we meet the requirements of ESEA if we're trying to meet...
Well, that's where the rub is. It's about the school teams going down. Because when we're talking about that pullout and that type of thing, I'd say that probably does not happen to that extent. And if it does happen, it might be one time a week, something like that. It might be a different subject each three.
Hi, I'm Adrienne. I am the supervisor of special ed. I do want to say that our middle schools, when we're looking at our arts classes, they have a skinny period that we put into place this year that's approximately a forty-minute period where each school is able to implement interventions at that time without pulling away from the arts. So that's in place.
Ooh.
At middle school?
High school, they're actually in the course catalog as reading courses. So they're not coming out.
So that they're replaced over time?
May I ask how you found the forty minutes for that skinny period? What are we, what are we compromising in order to have? Because obviously there was not a forty-minute extension to the school day.
Right.
So something had to give. So what, what was the give?
Most of the schools shave five minutes off of the other periods.
Okay, so we're shortening...
Three to five. Three to five, depending on the school.
And that's something, I mean, we can, I was just going to say, that's something we could look into and talk more with Dr. Domain about, I mean, that other levels as well, like elementary. Because in a lot of my conversation, I was focusing back on that elementary pre-intervention and how we need to get in front of it from the beginning.
So, this idea of, of having access for these students, to me, it's also about the special services like social workers and making sure that those people are meeting with students at a time that does not impact their instruction. Whether that's happening before school and after school or whenever. So it's not just about pulling kids out of the things that they enjoy doing.
Yeah.
The things that some people would refer to as fluff in order to see that they get the intervention, but to be sure that the other scheduling of services that the kids need is happening at a time.
Any related services, like speech, language therapy.
Right. So to me, it's, it's a big communication, it's a big collaboration, it's a big scheduling issue for the individual schools as well as...
And being very strategic.
Right, and being very strategic. And this is, this is just one of your, one of the arms of your, of your plan, is that greater access to those students or for those students...
We have seven or eight more slides. I'm getting a little fearful though to move forward. We have five more to blow in.
You want to have a technical problem now? It goes down.
And I see Mr. Right now are getting red.
I can unplug it if you want.
Looking at the IEPs, we already spoke to really making sure that they're aligned with grade level Common Core. Ensuring that all educators understand the difference between accommodations and modifications. Accommodations is accessing the Common Core state standards with supports. Modification would be, you're actually changing the content. And we need to, we need to make sure especially our special ed teachers understand this. And we have to make sure that we have the materials in place and the procedures to ensure that they are accessing the framework. Here, we really need to get back and looking at our data. And at one point, we were really, really focused on students with disability and monitoring them almost on a daily and weekly basis. And I do believe we need to reemphasize that so we can determine if they are or are not learning and then putting in the additional supports. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, this was a real, real focus. And over time, just because of different initiatives and different demands, we probably haven't paid as closely attention to it. But we need to get back to where we're really monitoring frequently the data and performance. Once again, we have to have special ed teachers collaborating and communicating that they're not working in silos. And then the last one, which is so, so important, we need to make sure that the, the teachers have evidence-based, individualized instruction and support services available to them. Understanding the research-based instructional practices, that's just having a big toolkit of how you can reach students that learn differently in different ways and so forth. We have to have time to provide professional development. Once again, I'll go back to where I know regular ed teachers are getting a steady dose of the Common Core state standards. We need to make sure that our special ed teachers are equally as, as well-versed and understand to be able to navigate it. And once again, creating that high expectations within the classroom. Interventions, once again, we don't want them missing classroom instruction to get the intervention. Going back to, and this is the, the past too, there's some internal debate as to our interventions. Are they getting what we have them designed to do? So we're, this year, going to spend a lot of time looking at our different interventions and make sure they are advancing students the way that we need to. Shared ownership. A lot of times, you'll have a culture where either the special ed teacher owns the student or the regular ed teacher owns the, we need to make sure that it's a joint ownership, that they're working collaboratively, that they're equally invested in moving that student forward. So we're going to really work on building that collaborative piece, establishing high learning expectations for all students, and once again, strengthen the instructional practice. I can say with little doubt, our most advancement will occur in the regular ed classroom with a teacher that has a broad range of strategies to meet the different needs of students. That's where we're going to get the most impact, with special ed teachers going in and providing additional support. But they have to have the same expertise as a regular ed teacher, otherwise they're a glorified paraprofessional. And that goes back to our emphasis on professional practice.
Where would you say we are with having our teachers understand that, that the IEP is not just the special ed teacher's responsibility and, and the special ed teacher's tool? That the classroom teacher also has some responsibility or has much responsibility for seeing that those accommodations are made and that those IEP goals are being worked towards?
We've shifted that paradigm a little bit. But as you know from your teaching days, that is always an uphill battle. And once you get that SWD code on you, it's almost like, oh, you're the special ed teacher you own. And I know Jeff's department's worked really hard with both regular ed and special ed to try to bridge that. And I know through Dr. Domain's efforts, we'll continue to have that conversation and, and continue to shift that paradigm. But that's always been an issue.
Right. And I would offer that as important as it is for special ed teachers to receive professional development in Common Core, it's equally important that the regular ed teachers be given professional development in terms of accommodations and techniques, those sorts of things that would help them as they work together to accomplish what needs to be accomplished. So it's, it's not just the special ed teachers that need the Common Core PD, it's also the regular ed teachers who need some PD with regard to how to work with a specialized population.
You're dead on on that, Mrs. Williams, with the, the challenge. And this will be the challenge moving forward. Our, our teachers are not carrying one plate right now.
They're carrying many.
They're carrying two plates that are overflowing. So we need to, when you see this, we need to be super strategic in how we advance these initiatives with both regular and special ed teachers.
And I hear you with regard to being strategic, but as a priority, where, where is it ranking? With everything that teachers have on their plate, where does this, where does this fall on the plate?
A lot of times, that depends on each school. Because when you look at the new SPI indexes and everything, we need to take into effect all of this data. And we're working on putting out like a state of special education for each school. So each school can kind of sit down and review that and look at where is this priority for us? As a county, it might be here, but for our school, it's here. And it might be here in math, it might be here in English, it might be we need to have more access to make sure our kids are getting the music language and everything else.
I just had a question about the teachers, the, the special ed teachers. Are they also sort of departmentalized? I worked with them out at North Higbee. Of course, that was all in language arts, English. So I'm wondering if they go into other subject areas besides that? Because I really forgot to ask them that when they were there. They were just either with me or other English...
We're, we're going to spend this year also looking at how they're assigned. And one recommendation that I am going to have a deep conversation with the department is, do we need to specialize in language arts and specialize in math? Because we don't want somebody to have so many different areas to learn that they never learn anything well. So that's something that we will be looking at very carefully.
I think that's an excellent idea because I know that some of the special ed, well, special ed in itself was every, every subject. So when you elevate that and you're trying to make it more rigorous, obviously, that person would then have to be sort of specialized in every subject, which seems almost impossible.
It is. And the example that I like to use is my certification is, in special ed, is K-12. But you would not want me teaching a geometry class. That would be a disaster. And part of what we tried to do in, in years past is we really looked for dual-certified teachers where they have a special ed training and an English or special ed in that. That's really the way to go.
Then they are hopefully put into that.
Correct.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to mention was when you were talking about the teachers need to take responsibility for the special ed students. I had, I had a special ed teacher who came in my room and said, well, I can only talk to my students. And I said, well, they're all my students. So I think, I think teachers do need to understand that they are all theirs and they are responsible for them. And now with, with the evaluations showing responsibility for them, they have to be even more...
I agree wholeheartedly.
Aware of that.
I don't want to cut off a great conversation, but we're six, seven minutes over the time we've allotted. And I do want to make sure that our members have a few minutes between meetings. So I'll wrap it up.
A few more slides to cover.
Literacy is king. This is, Dr. Wilcox speaks to this all the time. And we understand that the complexity of texts, it gets harder and harder. We need to make sure that our, our students are able to meet that complexity. So it's a real emphasis on ensuring that our, our students read well. We also need to make sure that they write well. And that is probably through MSA, one of the areas that we... And that is probably through MSA, one of the areas that we moved away, just because MSA wasn't a strong component, we need to revisit it. And of course, mathematics is not the stepchild. The Common Core state standards have a very, very strong emphasis on these as well. We need to make sure our students have the skill sets. I'm going to just go through these. These are the reading initiatives that we're moving forward. Certainly because of time constraints, you can email me or certainly pull me aside, but this is how we're going to address reading. This is how we're going to address writing. It's going to be a heavy lift, but we're all very committed to ensuring that students with disability achieve the maximum potential, prosper, and compete successfully in the, in the 21st century. Some additional initiatives that I just want you to make aware, be aware of, we're going to survey principals in August to see what they see in terms of additional supports. We're going to make a conscious effort to survey parents of children with disabilities and see what they need. We're going to review all existing programs that you saw and determine effectiveness, both logistically and also cost, best practices. We're going to go look at what some other systems do. Move a little more away from compliance to instruction. There's probably no one better in the business than Jeff when it comes to compliance. We're going to shift a little from that and pay a lot of attention to instruction. And we really want our parents engaged. We know that is so, so important. They are the experts of their children, and anytime we can have them in the dialogue, then we're in much better shape. And entertain, we will entertain any questions. I apologize for whatever.
One word, it's on the page 14 with the special education performance indicators, where the, the column that says target met or not met, have you discovered any, any systems that have that column with yes in the state of Maryland?
We have not.
And have you looked at that system?
We have not, but we will be.
I, you know, I've always adhered to that practice. Someone is getting it right or someone is being successful, what, what's making them that way?
Good recommendation. We'll serve it.
Hopefully a short one. My understanding is an IEP stops at the end of high school, does not move with the student onto college or training, whereas a 504 does. So if I'm correct with that, do we make an effort to evaluate students in their senior, junior year, thinking of if they're ready to be transitioned from an IEP? Is there a way of transitioning to a 504? I know that 504s are handled under guidance department rather than special ed. So my concern is whether there is that continuity or alignment. So we're pushing college and training post-secondary, so my concern is do parents know that an IEP doesn't move forward with a 504?
That might be something to get back with you about as a group, maybe, if you went more in depth on that.
I always thought they could move forward.
Universities do implement accommodations from IEPs. They don't have an IEP per se, but a lot of times...
Will they accept an IEP or do they accept? I was told they only accept 504s.
But they look like it accommodations and usually implement that through the disabilities office at each college, like for me, I know when I was in school. WVU had, I just know that as an example because I had kids that transitioned to that. They had an act or office. I know HCC has an office for disabilities. I mean, that's something I can get you more information on because I don't really want to misspeak, but I do know that they review what they left us with and look at that as accommodations that they would get in the classroom. And my understanding is that they do implement accommodations from IEPs through that office.
And our guidance counselors, as they're working with our IEP students to move on to possibly post-secondary, there is that conversation or is...
We probably need to double check with Dr. Burnett and make sure that conversation is, is occurring because that's critical for, for students moving on.
To me, it's like, where are we heading if we can't help them take that next step?
We'll check into that and we'll provide you some follow-up information.
I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment with regard to reviewing the existing programs to determine their effectiveness. I don't know what that will look like, who will be involved, or how that will take place, but I would hope that you would give us the opportunity to meet again in a work session and, and have that information shared with us as to those programs and their effectiveness. Thank you, thank you for today.
Thank you.
Very much.
No, thank you as well, Dr. Marco, Mr. Gladhill, and all the, the team back here who live this every day. Thank you for, for what you do, first of all, and second of all, for supporting this work session. You can see the members are very engaged, and we thank you all for that.
Thank you.
We'll adjourn here and reconvene in five, 10 minutes or so up in the conference room.